Seven o'clock. I will call the meeting of the Bourne Select Board to order on October 15th, 2024. Note, this meeting is being televised, streamed, or recorded by Bourne TV. If anyone in the audience is recording or videotaping, they need to acknowledge it at this time. Jamie, are you recording?
Ah, yes, sorry, I was trying to find the raised hand.
That's okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else recording? Use of flash photography during select board meetings is prohibited. If anyone from the meeting wishes to access the meeting, they can do so by calling the following conference line, 1-929-205-6099. Zoom meeting ID is 869-5775-5505. The password is all uppercase, B-O-U-R-N-E. The Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak must raise the hand icon until the chair asks them to unmute. If you are on Zoom, please make sure that your audio is muted, so we don't get background noise. Thank you. All items within the meeting agenda are subject to deliberation and votes. We begin with a moment of silence to recognize our troops and public safety personnel. Salute to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty, and justice for all. Next item is report from executive session. We approved and released the minutes of the executive session of September 10th, 2024. Reading of the select board vision. I would like to read the vision.
I can take it.
Anne Marie.
Bourne is a proud community that embraces change while respecting the rich heritage of the town and its villages. It is a municipality based on strong fiscal government with a durable economy that recognizes the rights of all citizens, respects the environment, especially the coastal areas of the community, and the amenities that it affords. Bourne embraces excellent education and offers to citizens a healthy, active lifestyle.
In the mission.
I can do that.
Jean.
Bourne will maximize opportunities for social and economic development while retaining an attractive, sustainable, and secure coastline and environment for the enjoyment of residents and visitors. Through responsible and professional leadership and in partnership with others, Bourne will strive to improve the quality of life for all residents living and working in the larger community.
Thank you. I will note that Melissa Ferretti, this evening, is on Zoom, a select board member Ferretti. So, all of our votes tonight will be roll call votes, and we have Anne Marie, Jean, Peter, and myself here in person. Community shout out and recognition. I have a congratulations in order to Mass Maritime Academy for accepting their new training vessel, Patriot State Two. It's a really awesome ship, state of the art, and it's going to provide great training for the students at the Maritime Academy, so. Yes. Who else?
Also, angel babies, they came before us a month ago for use of Buzzes Bay Park for a recognition. As we speak, they are lighting the tea lights, the tea candles, and they'll be lit to 10 o'clock this evening, so if anybody afterwards, on your way out, can take a ride down Buzzes Bay Park, you'll see this. It's a very moving ceremony, what they're doing over there, so, great job by them all. I got to talk to the group before I came here, so, again, if anybody has time after the end meeting, I recommend you go by and see it, we're all lit up.
Thank you. Next item, public comment on non-agenda items. Is there anyone signed up for public comment on a non-agenda item? Seeing none, I will spare the instructions. Next is joint meeting with the Housing Authority to appoint a member to fill a vacancy. Do we have members of the Housing Authority here?
There's one online.
On Zoom.
Hi, Cara Glossso Garcia, Executive Director.
Kathy Durant, Kathleen Durant, member of the Housing Authority and also a resident.
Okay. So, there, how many people do we need for a quorum?
Three.
Of your committee?
It's a five-member board, so you need three.
So, you have a quorum?
The director doesn't count, so it's a quorum.
Who's the chair of the committee?
Cara.
Executive is dispensed, but he is not available due to COVID.
Okay. Do you have a vice chair or clerk? Is there a quorum of your committee? Do you have three members of the five?
Not at this time. Our board, right now, only has three members.
Okay.
Because we have a quorum of either board, I'm moved that we defer this item until they can produce a quorum.
Okay. So, we need to have a quorum of your committee in order to appoint someone, to have a mute. We need to be able to call your meeting to order.
Correct.
To have a joint meeting, so, Mr. Meyer has made a motion to defer until such time as you can produce, have a quorum?
Okay.
Okay. So, is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Anne Marie. So, any further discussion?
Someone?
Yes. You have to come up to the podium and introduce yourself.
I wanted to get on to the board of commissioners. Does this mean that I'm not on the board of commissioners yet?
Yes. That means, in order for appointment to be made, we have to have a joint meeting of the Housing Authority and the Board of Selectmen to vote a member.
And when would that be?
When they can have a quorum of their committee to have a, be able to open a meeting.
Okay. Will I be notified?
Yeah.
When we know when they're able to meet, yes.
Right. So, when they notify the select board that they can have a quorum for a select board meeting, they will notify the town administrator, and the town administrator will notify you as an applicant that when we're going to be having the meeting.
That would be.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
You too.
Okay. Motion by Peter, second by Anne Marie, to defer appointment. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Anne Marie.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
Jean.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
Next item is Barnstable County Assembly update by Representative George Slade. Welcome, George.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I am George Slade, and for the past four years, I've served as the elected member, the Bourne's elected member, to the Barnstable County Assembly of Delegates. And you probably know this, but a lot of people don't know what goes on with the county yet. The government operates under the Home Rule Charter that provides for an administrator that's appointed by the elected county commissioners, and they form the executive branch. The elected Assembly of Delegates, elected Assembly members act through ordinances, and they serve as the legislative branch of our county government. The region has a unique set of common concerns that makes county government, their existence very important to the Cape, because county government almost does not exist for the rest of the Commonwealth, but because we are so far from Boston, we do have a shoreline that makes us kind of unique, I think county government has survived. I can't vouch for that, but I think they've been around for 30 years, past the dissolution of most of the other counties. But, anyway, the services are outlined at length on the website, and too numerous to elaborate here, but the, among the services that Bourne directly benefits more recently and ongoing is the dredging services, most recently, south of Bassett's Island, high-quality IT services on a contact basis for town hall and town departments, which is very healthy during this long transition. I think it's a, we've, anyway, gone through a fairly long period. I mean, I was sitting on the board when the, I guess, we almost had a IT person, and it's been ongoing, but anyway, the services that the county provides is, I think it's still very helpful, and we have to allow them, we have to let them know when, at budget time, when it's time to re-up for the next year, but, anyway. Human Services, which addresses the opioid crisis through Narcan distribution, and provides homelessness programs and education for seniors on Medicare through the SHINE program, which is serving health, insurance, needs of everyone, and it's very helpful as a lot of our residents age, and the services are provided right in this building as well as at the county. Access to regional expertise in environmental issues, the Cape Cod Commission, and there's a person by the name of Brian Baumgartl, he's an IA specialist, and he does this traveling show, if you want to call it that, at the area libraries, and he was recently at the Bourne Public Library, and he hosted something called Waste No Water, and he is really the county guru when it comes to wastewater issues. And there's a single payer insurance survey, which is a project that's being done throughout the 15 towns, as well as the county, to ensure that the 15, that this area is paying the lowest possible premiums, and that's, I think they've got 10 of the 15 towns, and the county is on board, so they're really trying to process all this and get some answers before, to help at some point in time when, if there is some large group benefit in putting us, lopping us all into one insurance group. And ARPA, the funds distribution for Bourne ambulances, sewer, school, IT, training for the town staff, and actually, the use of the portal, I have to commend Town Administrator Marlene and Erica Fleming, that they were kind of at the leading edge on learning how to operate the portal, which was started about three years ago, but, anyway. And AmeriCorps Services, which AmeriCorps has a facility right here in Bucasset, but these services have a positive effect and make an overall improvement to the town. One of the reasons I was called here tonight, I like to give a, you know, occasionally, I come before the board and just announce what I've been up to, just to let you know that I'm still around, but, anyway, there is something called Ballot Six that just emerged about three weeks ago, and it was, you know, the 15 towns on Cape Cod are the only towns that have this particular ballot question, that's why, if you've got the booklet from the Secretary of State, which outlines the ballot questions, there are five ballot questions that are statewide, and they're included, but the ones that are germane to certain areas or to a particular town do not appear, and that Ballot Six wouldn't have appeared in that document, anyway, but it just was put together, but it's, Ballot Six is an opportunity to refine the county government, to allow the Assembly the authority that it was intended to have originally, and to be more directly involved in the budget process. Rather than increasing the power, it will serve to clarify its authority to be an effective check and balance, which is the bedrock of democracy. We have these forms of government within the county, and it's, what happens is, the administration and the Assembly actually work hand in hand, but they're also, it's kind of like a bicameral system that we have in our federal government, and there is a system of checks and balances. But, anyway, the Assembly does need additional staff, specifically, an assistant with media releases, to inform the public about the Assembly meetings and activities. The public is largely, in the dark, unfortunately, about the Assembly. I tell people I'm the Assembly of Delegates, and usually, the response is usually a yawn or some, what is that, you know, but, anyway, it is, as far as the county government, it's kind of sandwiched in between the state government and local government and federal government, and it kind of gets lost, but there's a lot that happens on the county level, but the, an alarming high percentage of delegates run unopposed, there's an election coming up in November, and of the 15 towns, I believe 12 of them are, the delegates are running unopposed, and that's kind of alarming for a contested, should be, what should be a contested race. And, anyway, I believe there's a connection between the lack of, you know, the distribution of the, the lack of publicity, as well as the, what does not come across very easily to people. Anyway, Question Six would, as I said before, allow the checks and balances to occur with a little bit more teeth, enable delegates to propose and amend legislation, provide budget oversight more forcefully versus a simple advisory body, and, actually, personally, I'm quite impressed with the Finance Department at the county level. They took over a couple of years ago, and there was a little turnover issue, and they basically, they are, I think they're entering their third year now, and they're really doing, they really do a good job. Carol Capola is the Finance Director, and I'm quite impressed with her. She follows all the procedures that you would want somebody to follow in the budget process. I know, we know the, from our years of doing the town level, but it's, a lot of the same rules apply on the county level, and she does the, her homework, and getting the budget message prepared fully, and it ties in with the, our revenue sources that are very, we've actually had very good years, the last three years, because of the real estate boom, and a lot of our revenue is derived from real estate transactions. But, anyway, I'm personally a member of the Delegates Finance Subcommittee, and it's a very active committee. We have, in addition to the 24 meetings per year, I attend between eight and 12 additional meetings, usually around budget time, but it's, we're pretty active, but we like to review the budget, but there's not really too much activity that we can do. If there's something that's needed within the town of Bourne or any of the other towns, it's hard to get that process updated, because we are, we deal with the budget after it's been constructed. But, anyway, it's, recently, it's become just advisory in its scope, and that was not always the way. Apparently, this evolved somewhere around the turn, you know, year 2000, apparently, I don't know if it was just the players that were involved, but, anyway, this should really return to more of its real original intention, and the process needs to change in order for the delegates to better represent their towns. And note that the charter change process is a lengthy, it can be a process that's due, there's a charter changes due next year, but I think you know from the town level that when it comes to charter changes, it takes the, at least a year, maybe a year and a half before everything can get applied and put into effect, you have to get approval from the State House, but, anyway, that would be two more budget cycles without the benefit of this ballot, but, anyway, personally, I'm ending after two terms as Bourne delegate to the County Assembly. There is that importance of the Finance Committee, that's something that I'm probably going to miss, because it's kind of in my blood after so many years on the Finance Committee here, but, anyway. The important distinguish, distinction between the two bodies is the county commissioners are party affiliated, the Assembly is unpartisan, just like the Select Board here, but, anyway, and they interact, they usually get along well, but I got to figure there's probably some personality issues that have to be solved, but this is, would certainly help in getting this process, so we can represent the towns better, we can, it's going to be a lot more, the intention is to be a lot more open, and allow you, you know, people to actually see what's going on in a better manner. And I was, had the ballot question number six was entered into your packet, I think, from the, it had a letter from our Speaker, Speaker Princey, but they also, there was a letter from, or the release from the opposition to the ballot question, and I forwarded, and I think Marlene very nicely had this entered into your packet, so you have the both sides, and I think that's what we would like people to see. We had an article in the paper that appeared where, under guest commentary in the most recent Bourne Enterprise.
I'm reading it right here from the Upper Cape Select Board members, it looks like that.
Yes, that's right. They, they got this going, I think they had to deal without a quorum, so they had that everything was done in sections, and we are the Upper Cape group, four towns. But, that is, I don't know if there's any other questions? I don't have too much else to add, but there are some back and forths that you can actually see in your packet, as far as the benefits, and the, what the commissioners see is the shortcomings and the comments from the Assembly that rebut most of those.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments from the board, or?
Yes, well.
Go ahead.
Thank you for your long years of service, you know, between the town and the county, I know, between the Finance Committee and other boards, and then elected, you know, me having the pleasure to serve with you here on the Select Board, and then your work with the county, I mean, it's been amazing. I've learned a lot from you over the years, and I'm sad to see you choosing not, but also, there's a thing called retirement, where you actually retire, so, so, thank you, thank you very much for, not only being a friend, but being a mentor and everything else, and working and serving with you, so, you know, great, hopefully, moving forward that you have a long time to go to see your grandchildren and everything else.
That's part of it, but, anyway, thank you very much, Peter, I appreciate that, but, yeah, these are, I call myself the failed retiree, because I've tried it three times, and maybe this is it, the Select Board, now this could be number four, if it's a success, I've done it.
Just hang on to the RTA, right?
That's right, that's right. Well, that's, yeah, that's a point.
That's the last, that'll be the last, the last one.
I would think so, yep, but, anyway.
So, Jean, anybody else have questions?
Just echoing sense, yes, thank you very much for all your time, especially, we've benefited from the failure of your retirement.
Hope so.
So, I appreciate you putting, you know, getting together information about this ballot question, because it was really difficult to have information, and there is information on the public packet, if people want to look and see what it's about. I find it very interesting that it's, the question is symptomatic of different points of view of the commissioners versus the Assembly, and I would have liked there to be more of a compromise before it went to the ballot, so that we had an agreed thing, and I think people should know that the Assembly feels one way, the commissioners feel another, and maybe it is better to wait for the charter process, I don't know, but people should have some information, so I appreciate you putting it together and bringing it to us.
And that was, the opportunity's been given. It had to be done quickly, unfortunately, because there was some, I guess, they wanted to move on this a little bit more quickly a year ago, and it just didn't happen, and it was dying on the vine, so they moved quickly enough just to get it on the ballot, but it's, it wasn't ideal, that's right.
And I want to echo the thanks. I've served with you on the Finance Committee and on the Board of Selectmen, and you've been a great value to me as personally, you know, as a friend and as a mentor, so I appreciate what you've done.
Well, that's why I stick around so long, because I like to continue to learn, because I never quite get it right, but it takes a while, but, anyway.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is a consent agenda, approval of two anonymous library donations for $20 and $50, approval of a donation from M asterisk to the Council on Aging, ban request for MMA Holiday Craft Fair, and Chapter 90 funding request for crack sealing and drainage engineering.
Motion to approve the consent agenda dated October 15th, 2024.
Motion by Peter, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jean. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, it's a roll call vote. Seeing none, it's a roll call vote. Anne Marie.
Yes.
Melissa. Yes, you got a, can you say yes? Yes? I got a thumbs up.
Yes, yes. I couldn't, the button wasn't there.
Yeah.
This is just baseball.
Yeah. Jean, yes. Peter?
Yes.
MJ votes yes, five zero zero, consent agenda is approved. Next is licenses, consideration of change of manager request on an annual club, all alcohol beverages liquor license for Buzzards Bay Erie 3741 Fraternal Order of Eagles Inc. DBA Buzzards Bay Eagles 39 Cohasset Avenue, Born. So there's someone here. Thank you, welcome to the podium. Introduce yourselves and let us know what's going on.
Okay, I'm Edward Giaquimozzi. I'm the Erie president of Buzzards Bay Erie 3741. And what we're doing is just trying to transfer the liquor license into my name because the person that had just moved to Florida. Megan.
Megan McCarthy, secretary of Buzzards Bay Erie 3741.
So all is in order for this?
Yes.
Yes. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the change of manager request?
Yeah, motion to approve the change of manager request on an annual club, all alcoholic beverages liquor license for Buzzards Bay Erie 3741 Fraternal Order of Eagles Inc.
Second.
Motion by Anne Marie, second by Peter. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Anne Marie.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
Jean.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
MJ, yes. It's unanimous, you are approved, five zero zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Have a good night.
Thanks for your time.
10B, consideration of a new livery license issued to Luminous Management LLC. Is there someone here from Luminous Management? Do we have paperwork on this?
Maria emailed this.
Oh, is it today? Late. It's supplemental packet.
Yes.
Okay, hold on. Add the supplemental packet. Luminous Management LLC, is that 15 Hunters Brook Road?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five Hunters Brook Road. Looks like one car, says one car.
Yes. Kia Optima.
Looks like everything's in order?
Yes.
Yep. Okay.
Motion to approve the application for a livery license for Luminous Management LLC, 75 Hunters Brook Road, Sagmore Beach.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Anne Marie. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Anne Marie.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
Jean.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero. Next item is keynote license for Grill and More from 10-824 correspondence. So this, we do not have to approve this?
That's correct.
But we can approve it, right? I mean, if we have no objection, do we approve it or is there, how long do they have to wait if we don't approve it?
They just keep going with their process.
Okay.
There's no local approval. This gives, gives the town an opportunity to object if you want to.
Okay.
Doesn't hurt to go on the record saying we not, we do not object to the application of, motion that we do not object to the application for a keynote license for Grill and More of 340 Main Street, Unit 101 in Born, Mass. 02532.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Jean, that we do not object to the keynote license for Grill and More. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Anne Marie.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
Jean.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero. It's unanimous that we do not object. Okay, moving right along. This is going to be the fun one. Discussion regarding a possible license for Polar Express to public property at or near Academy Drive. Okay.
So in your packets, there was a memo outlining kind of the background and history and staff involvement in this request that was sent by residents of Taylor Road complaining about the Polar Express utilizing Taylor Road for commercial activity to pick up their cast members. Last year in 2023, I believe Peter was included in those, those correspondents. And that's how it got sent to the town administrator's office to begin looking at it and examining it. We had been in contact with the rail several times in early December of '23 discussing some of the core issues that the residents had. And what it was found was that the Polar Express had nearly doubled the capacity of the, each trip and therefore requiring two sets of cast members for each show. And they were utilizing Taylor Road for, again, cast member pickup and they would bring in the, a vehicle, a passenger vehicle that holds up to 55 people, so about the same as an RTA bus. And they would pull into the very dead end of Taylor Road, cast members would walk across on, along the train tracks and cross over into Taylor Road, load up there, and then the vehicle will back up on Taylor Road and then go around to pick up the second cast and then head back up to, to where the North Pole was. So that could happen anywhere between one to three times a day during the time that each of the Polar Express was operating. And so after a while, the staff actually, the, the rail did not actually want to amend during 2023. So staff put together a proposal, it was, it's in your packet. It was presented to the road traffic safety committee earlier this month. And residents and the rail were present at the meeting. Jean was there as well as your rep for the committee. And the, the committee had recommended to elevate this to the select board for consideration with recommendations to, one, change Taylor Road to a non-commercial use only that would still allow residents to have commercial activity responding to their, like as vendors or contractors. So if they have a contractor working on their home or if there's appliances being delivered or any of that, that is acceptable. However, commercial activity on this public way, which is residential use only, to actually be deemed residential use only. Proposed signage is in your packet and it has been approved or been, at least this language is being recommended by the police, DPW, engineering, as well as the road and traffic safety committee. In addition to that.
Can you hold on a second?
Absolutely.
Where is the, the, it says no commercial vehicle signage, but it's not, is there signage there? We're a bunch of pictures, but.
It says on page three above the photograph, it just says no commercial traffic residential only. So that would be the wording on the sign.
So it would be on the yellow point?
So it'd be above the dead ends, the signage that's on the telephone pole.
That doesn't, I'm not, I'm not sure that's a good sign. Because that's not, you're allowing commercial use that's related to the residents. It's not no commercial traffic.
Right.
No commercial traffic means you, no trucks and you can't go there. Is this, is this the standard sign? Is there a standard sign for this?
I don't, I don't believe so. This is, staff has looked at this. The police department didn't have any objections to the signage. Even the rail didn't have any objections in the signage, but the.
I don't know, I have.
I, I mean.
I mean, cause you have, you have a mail, you have a mail carrier truck goes down there every day, you know, at least six days a week, you have a UPS or Amazon or whatever. So those, those, those are, those are just, those are temporary uses, you know, you're in, you're out, you're not, you know.
Serving the residents, they're not actually conducting. So what the sign, the intention of the sign, MJ, is to prohibit actual commercial activity occurring on the actual public way that does not have approval from the select board. Because that's what's happening is that there is a current commercial activity that is making money and their employees are loading and unloading on your property without any protection from, one, for the town and two, for the residents and their quality of life. So that is what this, the intention of the sign and the intention for this proposal as well.
Okay. I understand the concept. I like the concept.
Yeah.
I don't, I'm not, I don't think that the sign says what you want it to say. It's more like commercial use by, for residents only. I mean, it's no commercial activity or commercial use for residents only. Something like that is really what you're trying to get at.
Okay.
So I, and I'm wondering if there is some sort of standard sign that Mass. dot or the federal highway, I mean, there are these all kinds of signs that actually do this kind of stuff, so I'm wondering if there's a standard sign. But I mean, I got the concept, I'm just not crazy about exactly it saying that. So, okay, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no, it's fine. No, there's very valid points and thank you for bringing that up. So we want to get it corrected if this is something that the board is, you know, willing to entertain. So the second portion of the proposal was the staff had evaluated a compromise to utilizing a, a pull-off area on Academy Drive that you can see. That was the first suggestion that we had identified. We looked, we went on site visits, including conservation, and identified that it was large enough to hold and retain that size of a vehicle. And, and so that was proposed to the road and traffic safety committee. At the time of the meeting, the rail then also made a suggestion of utilizing Taylor Point Marina area. We had, the staff had not had time to vet it yet. So right after the meeting, about two days later, we had police, fire, DPW, natural resources, engineering and myself with the rail show up and actually evaluate the site. And included in your memo is basically an option A and option B, that during their dress rehearsal weekend that sponsors, first responders, that the rail would test out both locations and then let staff know which one would be more suitable for their operations on a consistent basis for this. We're approaching this as a pilot program to test it out and see if it will solve the issues here. And, and so that is what's before you tonight is an opportunity to test out options A and B and then authorizing the chairwoman, if you so agree to, to then enter into a license agreement, which was reviewed by staff as well as council for the language that we can then go into a license agreement for the duration of the 24 season for Polar Express.
But we won't know tonight which option they're going with?
No, that won't be until November 15th weekend.
Are they leaning more towards one option over the other or do they think one is more?
Option B actually, I think, is a little bit more ideal. And.
Which is the Marina?
It is the Marina area. There is plenty of look, there is plenty of turning radius. We actually were standing in the parking lot at the time that somebody was utilizing the ramp and we could watch them because we actually stood in their way to see if they could make the turn and they did. So, but during November to December, it is not as frequently used during the evening hours when the Polar Express is actually occurring. So.
Is it used, is the boat ramp used in November and December?
Yes, according to the natural resources director.
It's available.
Okay.
Yep. It's still, they still have access. It's, it's wide enough and the area, the bus would be parked and we would have it signed and marked out, or not marked out, but at least it would be signed with temporary signs so that they know the space and that would be authorized in the license agreement.
Yeah. And if there was a big boat or something that was having trouble backing up, they could always move the bus or something. I mean, right? Yeah.
So in option A, where are they turning?
They're, they're not turning.
They're not turning in option A?
They would be facing towards Main Street.
Right.
And they'd be loading right there on Academy Drive.
They go up the right lane and at the intersection of right lane and guess do a turnaround into that because it's a big open and by Taylor Road it's a big enough that you can make a left-hand turn and then go back down Academy Drive and pull off to the right, right before the train tracks.
So they're turning around just further down?
They can turn there or in the Marina area and then come back around. So it's whatever the driver prefers.
Yeah.
It looks like that would be, it, it looks like the bus would move, be partially on Academy Drive there. It doesn't.
Yeah, it, it, it's a narrow stripped area, but I mean, option B may be safer all the way around. I mean, the history of this is over the years, the Mass Coastal Railway for the Polar Express has had, had challenges. One year Academy Drive was blocked across for over seven minutes at a time to a point where an ambulance or it could not get over it. And as, as what happened is finally there was some agreement to separate the cars, you know, so Academy Drive could have access for public safety back and forth. Then the next year was a very cold winter, so the truck, the, the train was idling overnight and it was keeping some of the neighbors in Harbor Place up. And then last year is going up and, you know, going down Taylor Road, which is a dead end street where you have a family, grandparents who take care of three grandchildren who we all know in the neighborhood. But it still, I mean, it was just, we just doing a commercial use for, you know, you know, for their advantage and it, it wasn't right. I mean, I'm glad that there was an avenue of putting, bringing the rail, the rail company and the town to the table and the residents all in the same room to facilitate some sort of solution because this is long overdue. I mean, my biggest fear is what's going to come up next? And I hope that for this season, there is no more issues going forward. Hopefully this will fix all of those issues because it's not fear for the residents to have to have any fear in mind and the noise, the noise issues and everything else. Don't get me wrong, the Polar Express is a great service for the kids that, the families that use it, but also consideration for, for the surrounding area as well should be considered. And so by everybody facilitating a solution to this, I really appreciate it very much. So do we need to approve this?
Well, I'm wondering what exactly we're approving. Were you approving both options? Are we, are, this says.
Moving to pilot, both options?
Yep, on page six, I had put in a request for your consideration.
Well, so this, this is not, this says between December and November and December, it doesn't specify days. It says during the hours of 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
That's correct.
Subject to the licensee's strict compliance with the following. So are they there every day? I mean, what days do they do this?
There are, they've increased it to, I believe, 51 performances.
Yeah, 52 runs.
Fifty-two this year. So. So, and that's between, that is prior to the, I mean, that, those 52 performances do not include the first responder weekend, which is November 15th. And that's why November 15th weekend, they will, they have several runs of this dress rehearsal and that's why they're going to test out option A and option B. And then the license agreement would be reflective of which one works best for them.
Do we need to give them a license for November 15th?
Not at this time. I don't, is it for one day or? I mean, that's again, up to your choosing.
I, I had a question. I didn't make the site visit. Is the map that we have in our packet, is that, was that produced by Polar Express or?
Um, okay, so there's, there's two maps. The first one on page seven, that one is produced by the town and that identifies kind of what we had discussed on the, at the site visit. The second one on the following page, that was produced by the rail and that identifies the fence that was agreed to and discussed that they are going to be putting up.
So was, was.
Neighbors been notified of the fence?
Yes, they have been. I've been in constant communication with them. I notified them when their engineer, their surveyor was coming as well as the installer that happened over the weekend.
Was, was there a clear communication on, cause I had asked for vehicular and pedestrian flow, like where they were going to direct pedestrians to cross and.
Yes, that was, that was, I talked about and discussed. And you can see on the town's version of the map where the pedestrian, excuse me, the vehicle traffic was going to go in and out of. So.
Okay, good.
Yep. And he recommended, and that's included in the memo, he recommended additional signage, other things to assist with that type of flow of traffic.
Good, okay.
So are they closing up that, that little open, the fence is going across? So there'll be, there'll be no opening on Taylor Road anymore to go, you know, to go over the tracks and?
That's correct. Yeah.
Yes, continues.
Good.
Clients with their safety requirements.
Yes.
Remove brush and vegetation. Does that mean conservation has to sign off on it? Could it possible wetlands that are in the area?
Conservation looked at the Academy Drive location. The rail is, yes, conservation is still examining the rail section of it. They are in discussions on whether or not that will trigger conservation or, or review of conservation. There's some slight differences of opinions whether or not conservation needs to be even looking at it. But I believe that Stevie has been included on it and also on the email that I forwarded her with the section of law that the rail was citing, that they are exempt from it.
Okay.
So.
So the fences and the changes that were proposed are, correspond to option A?
The fence is just, remember, they just offered it. That is not option A or option B. That is, that is happening. They offered that and the, remember the residents had agreed, they loved that idea. They were very happy about that. So.
To clarify, if it had something to do with the privacy, cause I know that, well, hiding Santa.
Yeah, they're concerned about the pedestrians crossing and.
And I was concerned as well.
From here, from the neighbors over on Taylor Road, they, they are very happy with the resolution.
They are. Yeah, they are, very much so.
Yep.
What were the dates that you said for the?
November 15th.
November 15th is the.
It's the dress rehearsal.
It's the dress rehearsal. What are the dates of the other dates?
The 20 sec, November 22nd through December 23rd.
So the trial run is just a single event, so we don't need to include it in the license. So guess, so it's part of motion. So go from November 22nd to 2024 to December 23rd, 2024 is what we're filling. Motion to grant the.
Can we, can you wait? Cause I don't, I'm, I. I'd like them to come back and tell us what they're, which option they're going to use or whether they're going to use both. So before we sign a license agreement, which is open-ended, do we want to give them both? I mean, are we signing a license?
No, no. What I proposed on page six is that when that determine, when they determine that, you will be authorized, the vote is to authorize the select board chair to sign a license agreement for the use of town property at either option A or option B. We will fill in, in the example, the draft that I have included. It shows where that will be indicated on the license agreement for the season of November 22nd and 23rd. To, excuse me, November 22nd to December 23rd. The reason why this is being suggested is because it's being sensitive to your meeting schedule, which is very, very strained for the next month.
Okay.
And also to prepare for staff time to involve installing a preparation of signs and getting those ready. Get the signs made and get them ready to be placed when the decision has been made.
I would like the motion to include authorizing the chair to sign for either option A or option B, which in the license agreement should be not option A or option B, but should be an actual location, yes, determined to be the location. Once the select board has been informed, which option has been determined to be the best option. So I want, after November 15th, I want the select board to be notified, it can be by email.
Thank you.
That this is the option that's recommended in that after that I can sign it.
Parking license agreement.
Provided that I don't have any select board saying, I don't think you should, that's a good option because they're deciding and what other people might decide. So, and we have a meeting, possible joint public budget meeting, but we are going to be meeting on the 19th. So, which is only a couple of days after the 50th and that's not going to make that much difference for us to finally vote the license agreement. So I can approve, as long as it's enough that we're going to be notified and know exactly what we're approving and I, the board members are going to know exactly what I'm signing. I think that's fine.
Because if it's any opposition, you have the 19th, but if there's no opposition, why bother, you know?
That's what I'm saying. So I just want the board to be notified after whatever the weekend of the 15th is. So I think they have more than one run. It's not just the 15th, right?
So my motion will be to approve the Road and Traffic Safety Committee's supportive recommendations, one through three detailed on pages three through five of this memo so that the staff can begin implementing the changes and number, authorize the select board chair to sign a license agreement for the use of town property, either option A or, or B for the 2024 Polar Express season from November 22nd to December 23rd, 2024, twenty, yeah, December 23rd, 2024, four. And that the select board be notified and you can finish the rest of it.
Notified by email of the, which option is chose prior to the signing of the agreement.
That's my motion.
Second.
Motion by Peter. Second by Jean. Is there any further discussion by the board? Seeing none, audience, none, right? And a roll call vote. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I mean, I think this was good work.
This is excellent work. Very thorough, very well vetted. Everybody coming together.
It was November, it was long.
And a good solution that's been sought after for.
Yeah, I think it's a great solution.
A long time.
We don't want to upset Santa Claus and all the helpers.
All right, then. All right. Next is discuss and vote ice with mitigation land under the jurisdiction of Conservation Commission for Conservation and Wildlife Habitat. Mr. Barrett.
Good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Dan Barrett. I'm the general manager of the Integrated Solid Waste Management Department. And for this evening, we'll try to make this as quick. At your 9/24 meeting, you approved to execute a purchase and sale with Mac Hunter LLC. Along with it, you approved the form of the deed. From there, it went to the Conservation Commission. They agreed to accept it and accept care and custody. Along with it, they accepted the quick claim deed. Now we're coming back for the third and final step for you folks to consider voting to approve their acceptance. I know, I tried to, I need you to kill me. I'm trying to be brief. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions from the board?
There is a motion, I think, in your packet.
Yes.
I moved at the select board vote in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section HC and pursuant to the votes under Article 15 of the October 28th, 2019 Special Town Meeting, attested copies, copies of which are attached here too, do thereby approve the acceptance by the town of one Conservation Commission, the quotation Conservation Commission. Said land being dedicated to the public for the sole purpose of conservation and wildlife habitat protection purposes as described in the quick claim deed for Mac Hunter, comma, LLC, which land is under the care, custody, management and control of the Conservation Commission for Conservation and Wildlife Habitat Protection under the provisions of Mass General Law's Chapter 40, Section HC, 39B and 41 and Article 49 of the Amendments to the Massachusetts Constitution as amended by Article 97 for the, for, and for mitigation purposes for the town of one Department of Integrated Solid Waste Management facility.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Motion by Peter, second by Anne Marie, a roll call vote. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero. And we have paperwork to sign.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dan.
Well, we could do it later and give.
I don't, you take it.
No, no, no. I, I take it.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you guys don't trust me with that, you can. Have a good night, folks.
You too.
Night, Dan. Thank you. Next. Discussion and vote to set the snowplowing rates for the upcoming winter season. Mr. Sweeney.
Good evening. Matt Sweeney, Director of Public Works. I'm here to request the select board to approve the proposed snow and ice contractor rates for the upcoming winter. Last year, we did not raise them. There was a, excuse me, a significant increase in 2022 and we did not raise the rates last year in 2023. So for 2024, we'd like to propose to raise them 5% across the board for all pieces of equipment that we would like to utilize. We did do a review of the local rates, the comparable local rates for the surrounding towns. They were in your packet.
Yep.
Our rates are better, if not very competitive with their rates and we would like to keep that way to keep as many contractors on board as we can.
Thank you. I have to say that the documentation was very helpful in the comparisons and in the analysis of snow and ice appropriations and where it's falling in the five-year average. It's, that's very helpful because that's something that we really, I really like to keep monitoring to make sure that we look at that budget number to make sure that we don't get in the situation we have been in before. And like, so I think that, okay, so the documentation was excellent. Any questions from the board?
Are these, have you, have you had a hard time getting, you know, filling these positions for these subcontractors or?
I think everyone has. I don't necessarily think it's a reflection of the rates. It's more just a reflection of the time.
Yes, sure.
We haven't had a lot of snow on Cape in the past four or five years.
Yeah, it's kind of interesting that a lot of people have given up their plows. They pay so much for.
Insurance.
They pay so much for insurance and for the cost of the vehicle and for everything that they're not, they're not making any money with the amount of like snow that we had.
We struggle to get a plow for our businesses.
Yeah.
For our parking lots, yeah.
Yeah.
Commercial lot.
And it was interesting that you had like 12 people last year, but like six of them were like really used a lot. So, yeah. It sounds excellent, just excellent. We knew everything we needed to know.
Right, no question.
Yeah. Okay, so it was a motion to approve the snowplowing rates for the upcoming winter season as proposed.
So moved.
Motion by Anne Marie.
Second.
Second by Peter. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's a roll call vote. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. It's what the audience is here for. Discussion regarding the use of opioid settlement funds. Okay, so, actually Anne Marie was the one that prompted us to get this on the agenda cause she's had some questions and wanted to know what's going on. So you want to have Caitlin start? Or you want to have Anne Marie ask your questions or what would you like?
Sure. Why don't we give Caitlin a minute to just kind of brief the board on where things stand with the money that's already been appropriated by town meeting?
Okay, thank you. Hi Caitlin, welcome.
So yeah, the health department partnered with the Born Substance Free Coalition last year to kind of come up with a plan on what we want to do with these funds. And this spring, we partnered with Liz in the Assistant Town Manager position to come up with an RFP to contract an outside entity to come in and do a needs assessment. So they conduct this needs assessment and then create a implementation plan that includes strategies to address what needs were found in this assessment. Right now, we're in contact negotiations to hire such a contractor for that work. The goal was to make sure that all the funding that we're using is backed by scientific evidence that is proved to be effective and that we're addressing actual needs within the town. And yeah, any questions on that?
Anne Marie? Yes.
It's not, it's actually not what I envisioned on how this money was going to be used. I actually envisioned us as a community taking control of how, you know, how, how that money was going to be expended. There's a lot of models out there, particularly for like, I envisioned, you know, public health and police coordinating a program. There's a great program that Gloucester, Massachusetts has established that's become a national model for police, you know, assistance with addiction and recovery and, and initiative. There's, there's already so much out there that's already been identified as model. There's also not, I've been approached by nonprofits that already have established and know what, where the need is and are, you know, I, I envision having some of that monies, at least a portion of it, be grant opportunities for those types of nonprofits who already know where the needs are in the community. So I, I, for me, it's, it's, you know, and I know this isn't a, one of the goals or was part of the goals in the discussion when we're doing our, our annual workshop. But it's a real important issue. How, what's the expectation of how long this needs assessment is going to take? Cause there are immediate needs in the community that I think if, you know, we can allocate some of that funding or set, is it, what type of, so does the TA have the ability to spend the funds? Is it like a, a special revenue fund? How, how is it?
So the money has to be, the money has to be appropriated by town meeting.
Which it was.
Some of it was.
Some of it, yep.
Yeah. So right now, there is just over $167,000 that has been appropriated. It's in an article.
Yep.
Because it's, you know. Because it's, you know, it's one, we're, we're considering it one-time revenue. We know these settlement agreements are multi-year, but it's sitting in an article rather than the operating budget.
Okay.
So, it, that money rolls over from year to year. It doesn't close out in any way.
Right. But it doesn't have to, does it have, doesn't have to come back to the board for appropriation that you have discretion as a town administrator, right?
That's right, yes. So, it does not have to, it does, I can sign a contract with this group that, that's been selected through, through the RFP process. I can, I can sign that contract using these funds.
And what was the expectation timing-wise with how long the needs assessment was going to take? Was there any type of timeline?
It was an eight-month timeline with the group that we selected.
Okay, so, at the May 1st, 2023 Special Town Meeting, we appropriated $167,316.77. And so, what, what is the status of the other money? So, thus far, $443,608 has been collected. Has the rest of it not been appropriated?
It has not.
And we can't appropriate it now until the annual.
Or the, or the special in May.
Yeah, okay, so we can't appropriate, we can't do anything. So, there's another piece of money that's going to, that we know we're going to have access to. So, how much do we think this RFP is going to cost?
It's, I can't give an exact number because we have not executed the contract, but it is not more than $65,000.
Okay, so.
And the end goal of the RFP, and the end goal of this needs assessment is to create programming? Like, what are the next steps?
No, it's to guide the town on what strategies we want to implement. So, we would be selecting groups and nonprofits that already do exist that are addressing the needs that are within this town and granting them the funds to run those programs. We're not creating anything.
But to clarify also, those groups actually would be included in the stakeholders, in the community already. They've been identified as existing stakeholders.
Okay.
And they will be included. That was one of the things that the Evaluation Committee on the, when they were interviewing the candidates for selection, that was one of the primary identifiers, that it was going to include all of the existing stakeholders and already programs in existence to identify what their needs are too.
Right, because it's not to supplant. It's, it's to strengthen, you know, programming already in place. I think there's an important piece, though, with, I think there, if you're not familiar with the Gloucester model, that it's something to take a look at.
So, who decides, who decides who gets the money?
Well, that's why we're going through the planning process, because otherwise, you would have to create a program to decide about the money.
So, who's the, who's the, what kind of groups were in the Evaluation Committee?
The Substance Coalition, two members, I think. Beth was part of, on the Evaluation Committee for the Consultants. And we had, we had Joe Carrera, who's also, Stevie Fitch, who's on the committee, Caitlin, who's the staff support, and then Kristen Donahue from the schools. Thank you, Beth. And it, in the RFP, it also is, it was very clearly specified that they had to work with the Substance Coalition when forming and reporting to, about the needs assessment and identifying, again, as Caitlin said, strategies that then would be determined by the community as the priorities. It would not be the consultant identifying the priorities. It would be the community.
So.
But they'll provide strategies that they've identified from the interviews and the assessments and the surveys and all of the other strategies and the other, like, outreach that they will collect the data. So, instead of staff doing it, there's other communities in, around the Cape that are doing very similar types of needs assessments, which Caitlin and I are going to be joining, kind of more of the Upper Cape, Falmouth, and Sandwich and Bourne and maybe Mashpee, I think, too, Caitlin? Is that right? Yeah, and we will be talking with members of the staff that have been supporting these, this type of initiative to make sure that it is on a regional communication level.
Because when we first got the funds, there was a group from the county that wanted us to give all the management of the funds to them.
Yeah.
So, I do think it's better if we, we kind of do the Upper Cape towns and have a feeling with that. The one thing that kind of bothers me, though, is that there are, if there are groups or stakeholders who have things that they'd like to be doing in the meantime, you know, if we have, if so, if we have appropriated $167,000 and maybe $65,000 of it's going to go for the assessment that's going to take for eight months, and then we have another $276,000 that's going to come that we could appropriate in May, that's, you know, basically eight months from now. So, once we get the assessment, we could figure out, that would seem to me that we might be able to send some piece of money of the 167 that we've appropriated, we might want to have available as grants, like, if there was something that they wanted to do. I mean, maybe there's nothing they want to do, but I'm not sure we should just wait and have people, if they're asking, that they have needs. I don't know who's asked you and what they have needs for, but.
So, I, I don't think there's any opposition to doing that, but there's no structure to do that right now. So, if, if that's what the board wants to do, you know, you should, you know, you should essentially identify that as one of your goals and, and then, you know, but it's very much like the Community Engagement Committee. Who determines and how is it determined who gets the money? And who provides the oversight and what is the process for application and what's the maximum award and what documentation's required? So, all of that, you know, there has to be, there has to be, in my opinion, there has to be input on that. Caitlin and I can't just make it up.
Right. So, I, and what's the evaluation?
Right.
And I'm thinking we have the Human Services Committee, which does the grants for, they, you know, we appropriate whatever, $25,000 that, and we used to do more because we used to have the Visiting Nurse Association that was part of that, and that's been moved into the Department of Health, that Health Department budget.
I mean, if you, if you want to use that, if you want to use that existing structure and supplement, you know, supplement that Human Services Committee's work, but they would have to, they would have to be clear that this money is, you know, has, we have to document that it went to the reasons in the settlement fund for.
Right, right.
So, and it says, we, we, thus far, have 443,000 roughly has been collected. Are we hoping that would there be more revenue coming in and to this, or is it, it's just the final number you think?
No, no, this is not final. There, there, there's a payment schedule that goes out for, I believe, it's 12 or 15 years.
Because it was 54 billion was the total.
Yeah, so, there will be.
The first allocation is like 1.2 billion, right, from Massachusetts, I think? Something like that, 1.2 billion.
Was the 167,000 the first money we got, or was it two pieces?
I think it was the, it was the first couple pieces because more, more settlements agreements have been added.
Right.
With other manufacturers and pharmacies.
Yeah, I saw that online.
So, what is the, what is, what would you like to happen, Ann Marie? I mean, would you like to have a way that if someone had, would you like to have a system so that if the Substance Free Coalition or some other group?
Aaron's help requirements or, yeah.
Yeah, wanted, had an idea that they would like to have funds for, I mean, you, would you like to have a application process for a grant?
I envision that as well. I understand the, the need for, you know, the RFP and having that need to set, similar to like how we did the digital equity, right?
Yeah.
Right? We have this, we have this document now and we have a roadmap, so to speak, on, on digital equity. So, it, it, this is an important issue and to have a roadmap to benefit, you know, people in our community with respects to this, this crisis is, is really important. So, I, I do, I envision, I would like to see some of this money, whatever that dollar amount is, to be immediately available in, to, you know, in some kind of grant opportunities. I, Human Services, are they capable? I mean, is that a committee that?
I'm trying to think of who's on the Human Services Committee. I mean, that's really, I mean, Deb Olivera is on there. I mean, I don't remember who else. I was on there at one point. I mean, there's someone from the Finance Committee. I mean, and they pretty much administered the, there's someone from the Police Department usually on at there. You know, it's a similar kind of.
Yeah, Leona Bambachi, Carigus Garcia from the Housing Authority, a youth representative, Debbie from CLA, Megan from CLA, this Kelly Riley, Kristen Donahue from the School Department, Lieutenant Economies from the Police, and there's one vacancy at this point. So, it's, you know, there's, there's some people that have experiences.
Yeah, I mean, or, or, well, they have some because they do the grants. I mean, and we have the same Gosnell, Big Brother, Big Sister, there's Food Pantry. I mean, they, they get $25,000 and they give it out to these local, it's a kind of a different thing.
Yeah.
So, it, it, it could be, we'd have to have a method, an application process.
Right.
I mean, they have, do they have a grant application process through the Human Services Committee?
I think they do have a very.
Simple.
A very simple one.
Any comments from the audience? That's why you're here.
Well, I wasn't planning on speaking. Beth Griffin, just to give you a little bit of history. The Bourne Substance Free Coalition that exists in our town of Bourne has been over seven years. And it consists of people who work in substance use, myself as a licensed mental health counselor and a mental health therapist for Upper Cape Tech. We have Joe Carrera, the Fire Department, Nikki Bevlaqua for the Police Department. We have Kristen Donahue, who also sits, I believe, I just heard on the Human Services, Katie Shea, Stevie Fitch. We have a great group of individuals, Danelle Beers, who's here, David Sampson, who was instrumental in developing a 501(c)(3) for the Bourne Substance Free Coalition. And I just think it's really important that a lot of towns have had all this money come in. And one of the first things that they want to identify is a needs assessment because each town is different.
Right.
Okay, and how to best service our needs. But the other thing is put together a bunch of stakeholders in the town that they want to identify. Well, we're very fortunate in our town to already have that coalition and our coalition is volunteers. And we have been doing a lot of wonderful things in the town that I don't know if you're aware of and would invite you to one of our meetings for any of you to come and listen to the things that we've done. And I also want to stress the importance of collaboration because there are a lot of good programs out there. But I guess my point is, we do have a nice coalition and I think it would be important for all of you to come to our meeting, learn about us and with the needs assessment, identify the needs in our town so we can best serve the people in our community and that the money stays here to help us. And if I can just point out one other thing, this is the first time I worked on the National Institute Hail Studies and there was never money for prevention. This money has monies allocated towards prevention. I've worked in school district for 27 years and I've worked with families in my private practice. And I think it's so important and I think that my members of the Substance Free Coalition would agree that we need to get this early as well, rather, prevention rather than reaction to a problem.
Right, right.
So, I mean, I hope that, you know, we brought in people like from Comerchoy, so teaching kids healthy ways to manage various emotions, stress, anxiety, rather than unfortunately learn possibly the way to self-medicate through substance use. So, I just hope that we can take like a holistic approach in looking at this and that's really all I got to say.
But, so, would you benefit from grant opportunity?
Well, because of David Sampson's work, I personally wouldn't benefit and none of our members, we were 501(c)(3). What we would hope to do is develop programming, like, we just wrote our first grant.
I think would your 501(c)(3) benefit from a grant program?
That's what I'm saying. Not you. That's what I meant.
Well, I wasn't prepared to speak, so bear with me, please. And it's not my forte, but I'm working on it.
You're great.
We just put in a grant, like, to bring Chris Heron into the school systems in Bourne and Upper Cape Tech. And Bourne has been approved through the NIGRANT. Upper Cape Tech is still waiting for Cape Cod five, but if we can bring Chris Heron here to speak to probably 1,000 students about the importance of making good decisions, I think will benefit our kids.
Right.
And I think that's what we're.
That'd be a caveat, like, not, the money stays here.
That's, I think, why we're here and invested, yes.
I have no intentions of funding anybody else's, but there are some great models out there as well that I think could benefit, you know, the work that you're doing and, and being, having, you know, some funds initially to be able to, like, the whole purpose is to strengthen some, what's existing, right?
Exactly.
Right? And I, I think that's important. I think, I think we should be able to, to take some of these funds. They've been allocated since 2023.
So, let's take the Chris Heron example. So, if you have someone who's coming in, a motivational speaker who's coming in to do this and he can speak.
I think I've heard him speak.
Yes. Yeah, we actually brought him in 10 years ago into Bourne.
Falmouth, Sandwich, Mashpee, Bourne. If we all have, have this person come and speak down one trip where she's coming from is, you know, we all get it and it, that saves, that saves money.
Yeah.
So, it makes it more affordable for everyone to be able to do it. I think that's a great, those things are really great. That can make a big difference. I mean, it, it's, it, it changes the way people think. So, I, I think that kind of program, we're not talking about a huge program. We're talking about, you know, we'd like to have a speaker come in, or we'd like to have this day, or we'd like to do this thing. And to, I think we need to make, not hold off totally for the needs assessment and have some things where if there's a program that you want to have, I mean, the NIGRANT's great and sometimes they'll fund the whole thing and sometimes they won't, but they won't usually fund it multiple times, so, you know, that's.
Well, and that won't address Upper Cape Tech kids.
Right, and so, if you don't get the grant that you need for Upper Cape Tech, whatever, I mean, I don't know how much money it is, but that's the kind of thing where we, having it available and having, say, okay, we're going to, whatever amount of money, I mean, I'd say 50,000 until we get our needs assessment, have it be available and just have an application. We've got this program and, and, and you could, you could even say, recommend, you know, have it come to the Select Board through the Substance Free Coalition. We're there at the clearinghouse and they recommend it and it comes to us and we approve it, or you approve it or something. I just think it would be good. You have to wait, you have to come to, so we can, the people at home can hear you, your lovely voice.
Beth did a very good job, but I'd like to just add one thing. She mentioned that they're all, we're all volunteers. No one is looking for a payday.
Right.
In this group, so that we will continue to be all volunteers. No one is looking for a payday in this group, so that we will continue to be all volunteers. Regardless of what other money is around. Uh, and that's the way we, we're committed to, to this cause. We're committed to this community and, um, we're, the, the number of volunteers is growing. But, uh, they're doing a great job. A lot of very knowledgeable people. Their heart is in the right place. Their mind is in the right place and their body's out there doing it.
And you're, you're do, doing some great programs. You, you really do hear great things about it. So. I mean, do we want to go anywhere from here or we, you, you want to think about it? I mean.
I, I'd actually like you to make a motion on what you would like to do. And what, if you want to make fifty thousand dollars immediately available for grants. And if you want to, um, do you want to develop policies around the use of these funds? Or do you want to delegate this to me? Or do you want to delegate this to the Human Services Commission?
Is there, it, it, the opioid funds is specifically for certain things, right? It has to be used for specifically certain.
Yes.
Things. I mean, I don't, I mean, I could be wrong, but it doesn't seem like this is too much rocket science. That there's this a grand application. This is, these are the things you can use it for. We're using it for this, whatever, check off. What it is and, and this is our request and this is what we're going to do for it. And then it gets sent to whoever in the Town Administrator's Office. And if, if our mo, if our method of approving this fifty thousand is going to be subject to the approval of the Select Board, have the Select Board do it. If it's going to be subject to the Town Administrator's approval, have the Town Administrator approval to it. I kind of like the idea of it coming to the Select Board. Because I think it's something that makes it, um, visible what we're doing. It makes it. You know, we're, we're applying for, you, for, you know, a grant fund of X amount of dollars to bring this speaker in to Upper Cape Tech. We have this much money for Bourne High School from the NI Grant. We need this much money, you know, can we do it? It's, it's quick.
But if there's any con, if there's any contract, the Town Administrator executes them.
I would sign contracts, yes, but if the Select Board is making the decision on whether a group is funded or not. I, you should have some simple policies.
Yes.
So you should put, you should develop, you should do some policy development for that if you're going to have a vote on who's funded and who's not.
Yeah.
Guidance as far as the window of time, like it's, you want this advertised, so we solicit and applications are received up until then. And the limit of, of how, how many, like, is it up to five thousand dollars of grants for, per applicant? Or is it one applicant gets all the fifty thousand? Those are the policy decisions that would assist in the solicitation um, for the applications.
But if we want to do something sooner than that, is there another, is there another avenue until we get these policies written and approved? Drafted and, and approved, you know, if they, if they need money sooner for an event that just, you know, that would follow what's required, you know, you know, you know, I guess wondering if there's a quicker avenue. Because policies take a while to develop unless, you know, we fast track it and get it.
I'm not creating another app, open application thing. We just went through that. I think. I'm in, I'm inclined to say that the model would be more like, um, the CPA model. Only it would be open, that more like community engagement. There's no time limit, right? You can just apply for grants. There's, this is how much money we have available. I wouldn't make any limit on it. Whether we give you the full fifty thousand or not. I mean, I, I think it would have to, we'd have to have a definite benefit. Because I would hope to have it spread around, but, um. I think we can develop some policy around it.
Yeah, I think so. Anything we can do to get this money out there so we can do some, some awareness and education is, it's been, it's long overdue.
When is your plan for the speaker?
November twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Short window.
When do you hear from whether or not you're going to get the money for Upper Cape Tech?
I know that it's in the process, but that's the latest that I've heard. That they have.
You have to come, you have to come to the. That's okay, that's okay. So I'm just trying to have a sense. Because if it's, I, this is where the urgency comes from, you know? That if this, if this speaker could come to both Bourne High School and Upper Cape Tech and it's, I don't know how much money it is.
It's, it's, um, five thousand dollars per speak, per school. Yes. Um, we brought him ten years ago and he was ten thousand, five thousand dollars and we did Bourne High, Upper Cape Tech. And we also did a community event. So even back then, I mean, his demand has only grown. And I think when you do something like this with kids, I mean, yeah, you can do it once every four years, but that was ten years ago. So these kids need to get the message. So November twenty-sixth is the hope, um, that he comes. We're, he, he's booked. Um, so we're hoping positively. So as soon as we know, we can let whoever know if it's, our grant has been submitted.
Uh, yeah, I would say that for this particular occasion, if you've applied for a grant for, to come. And you're not planning a community event this time. You're just planning the two schools, right? Um, so, um, if, if there's an issue with getting the, uh, you don't get the grant that you've applied for, for Upper Cape Tech, that you let us know and see if we can make that available to, for that program. Before we do a whole policy.
That's my point is I want, I want to get it available sooner instead of waiting till the policy is developed.
Thank you so much.
Okay. And, um, I would suggest that the developing policy around this be something for the Policy Subcommittee to do. Like just to bring something back to the board and draft it. I think you have a good handle on it. So I think we'll, we'll kind of work on something and talk to staff a little bit about what they think is requirement. So. Do we want a motion that we would like to start developing policy around making fifty thousand dollars of the opioid fund available for, through a grant program? Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, it's a roll call vote. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ? Yes, five zero zero. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is authorize the School Department to access Town Council directly with all associated legal costs built directly to the School Department. Contract. Documents owner's council approval as to form. Okay. So, do you want to talk about this or a little bit?
Sure. So.
I think Carrie Anne may be on.
Um, I'm happy to start. Um, recently, the School Department has reached out and asked that a contract that they procured be reviewed by Town Council, which is completely fine. But Town Council is engaged directly to the Select Board, uh, not me, not through me. So, um, I, when I do a procurement for the town side of government, I reach out to Town Council and they certify the contract as to form. And what that is doing is Council is, is checking to make sure that we've complied with procurement laws. It's not necessarily, um, an opinion about the terms of the contract. It's, it's that the laws have been followed for procurement um, based on the cost of the item or service. So if the School Department wants to use Town Council to do that. I would recommend that the Select Board authorize them to use Town Council and to access Town Council for procurement for review of their contracts directly. Because I don't oversee the procurement on the School Department side.
Right. And then the question is if they're, so we have a policy on access to Town Council where it says that, and it was developed actually, and I think you've changed a little bit, but it was started back on, I want to say twenty seventeen by Tom Guarino. Where access to Town Council is through the Town Administrator. Um, a lot of that had to do with making budget control to make sure that it wasn't, nobody, people weren't like just calling Town Council and talking and running up the bill. So. And I know that with prior superintendents, there has been discussion between prior Town Council, Town, Town Administrators and school superintendents about who was paying the legal bill for Town Council review of contracts. Um, I do understand that there was a time, a period of time historically where Town Council was reviewing the contracts for the School Department. And then, um, at some point under, um, Stephen Lamarche. He hired an assistant principal who had a JD. And so he was using the assistant principal to review the contracts. I, and I don't know what's been happening since then. So, um, the owner's council wording. I put that on the agenda because, um, when I was on the Wastewater Design and Building Committee, the contracts that we were getting from Weston and Sampson that were being approved as to form, were being approved of Owner's Council, not Town Council. So, uh, it's those, that wording comes from the, um, the vendor who's provi, who's providing the contract. The vendor provides the contract and they put it in. So it's probably more appropriate that as a, we adopt that as Owner's Council. And if it's the town of Bourne, then it's the Town Council or, you know, if it's the schools, it's what, whether they use the Town Council or not. So, um, we did have in the motion that the legal expenses would be paid by the schools for their, review of their contracts. And, um, that we would, if we authorized the School Department to directly contact Town Council. I think it's a good idea to have the contracts from, uh, reviewed for procurement and to make sure that all the appropriate references in the contract of the different laws or whatever for procurement are, are correct. So I think that's a good thing. So, um, any questions, comments from anyone? You were on the School Committee for a while.
Right. And we, we did use council. We didn't go through the T, the Town Administrator. We just directly. We must have had permission.
Yeah.
Um, but a lot of our other contracts, just general contracts, union contracts, we had two legal councils, um, on the pay, on, you know, that we used consistently for those. And then for procurements or, you know, capital projects. Council review, Town Council review contracts, those types of contracts. But that was the only time we used Town Council for.
Yeah. Do you say of their own labor council? Do you have anything?
We did have our own labor council. We had two, yeah.
Uh, Carrie Anne, do you have, uh, Dr. Joe, do you have anything you'd like to add or questions or?
Hi, thank you. Yes, um, very similar to what's already been spoken and I'd like to thank, um, Mrs. McCollum for filling in some of the blanks. Because, um, at least during recent memory, which is Jordan's memory, because we don't have a lot of institutional memory left. Um, it always just, the contracts just went through Town Council and then they, you know, reviewed it for anything that needed to happen. Um, but through some back and forth emails with Marlene, I now understand that we could use our own owner's council of which our folks that do our labor contract that they'd be happy to do. So, um, either way would be fine with me. Um, I came into it under the impression that, that was the process uh, that Town Council needed to review it because, you know, it was a, a check and balance of the town. So we were just moving along under that premise. But either way would be fine. If you choose to grant those access, then, you know, we'd be happy to, to do with the new Town Council. Um, but if not, then we'll go with our own, um, our own group that we have under retainer. So thank you again.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? I think it's fine for them to use council, Town Council. I think it's, um, more streamlined if we authorize them to use Town Council. Um, to access Town Council directly with all associated legal costs built directly to the School Department. And, um, then if they do that, then they do that. If they choose to go someplace else, they can choose to go someplace else. But I think that makes the most sense. And, um. Do they contact Brian or Jenny Merrill or?
Jenny Merrill does.
Jenny Merrill is the contract. And you're familiar with, you, you, she's been part of the whole, uh, Esco thing. So, yeah.
So motion to authorize the School Department to access Town Council directly with all associated legal costs built directly to the School Department. Uh, Owner's Council is approved to form.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it is a roll call vote. So Anne Marie?
Yes.
Melissa? Is that a yes?
That was a yes, yeah.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ? Yes, five zero zero. So you're good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion regarding the old police station property on Main Street Buzzards Bay. This is really, um, just a kind of a preliminary discussion because I think we've had it two years on our Select Board's goals. And we need to, um, kind of think about, I think, what we want to do with this building, what's appropriate to do with this building. What we want to see in this, um.
Cause what it is, is this building was, was, was not a great environment for our, to be, to be a police department because of a lot of deficiencies, you know, with it. And ultimately because we have a new, a brand new police, not brand new, but a fair, a new police station over on, um, Reverb because of it. So I wouldn't want to put any money into fixing an old building like that. That's going to create a lot of work. Personally, I think the best use of that property is to, is to raise the building in its entirety and remove the gas tanks. But keep the land as municipal land because we're learning with different projects. We can't find adequate town land in general for various, you know, town projects. And I, I would like to see us, you know, tear the building down and use it for other municipal uses, you know, within, you know, I mean, now. The flip side of it is that property is valuable for economic development. You could, you could sell it, you know, and, you know, and a developer could, can put a project, you know, do something with it.
It's costly development.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's, um, I don't know. I mean, I rather, I rather just tear the building down and then worry about the use of the, of the property after that. Just because if we, if we, if we find a municipal use that's perfect for that site, then we have the land for it. But I don't want to hold on to it forever either if it's just going to sit there when we can get, when we could sell it and then get tax revenue for it ultimately. But, I mean, we, I mean, when I say recreational uses, I'm thinking of pickleball courts, tennis courts as a recreational use because.
It's right in the residence. That's kind of the thing. So back in two thousand nine, when we looked at this, as the Capital Outlet Committee looked at all the town buildings and we had the Cecil Group did, uh, you know, an evaluation of all the buildings. And then we had highest invest use done for any building that we felt didn't have a future municipal use. Like, we can't say that we're going to use that, that building for municipal use. So we had, and at that time, there was the. So we had, and at that time, there was the Cody School, there was the Hoxsey School, there was the police station, there was the school administration building, and I forget which other ones we had. We had a couple of them done. And so that highest and best use tells you, you know, what can it be used for, what is it zoned for, what's the value of it? If you raise it and sell it, what's the value of it if you sell it as improved? What's, you know, so you get kind of an idea of, and I think this is something that we, we need to get some input in. I do think that we might want to do a revised highest and best use, but also think about, like, maybe we should get the planning board and talk about, to the planning board about it. Maybe we should have a joint meeting with the planning board and say, we have this property, it's right in the place, I think, where you've got MBTA zoning. It's right in, it's right in, it's all homes around there. Should it, how should it be used? Should we consider it downtown? Should we consider it residential? I don't know what, you know, we need to do some thinking about it. And that's more like, how do we go about thinking about what we're going to do with this project, this property?
I think it's long overdue. You know, we've been waiting on this for a while, you know, it's been vacant. I think it's a nice saw as you're driving by, you know, and it's been vacant. So I think, I personally think at a minimum is we should look into removing it just for liability, you know, you're not maintaining an empty building.
If I can.
Interject.
If you are going to dispose of the property for future development, for economic development, I would actually recommend you sell it as improved. One, it will be, it's, it will be costly and difficult for us to remove the building. It has to be abated.
Oh, yeah, asbestos or whatever's in there.
It is, that is not a small project, removing that building. And if you're going to be selling it to a developer anyway, that needs to be part of their, you know, that should be work that they do as part of their project, is my opinion. There's also, if you, any good developer knows that you don't tear a building down until you have a plan to replace it. Because if there are non-conformities or grandfathering there, if we tear the building down, those are all gone, so.
I don't know. I guess, I guess think vacant town property is valuable.
It's a tough building.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Well, I mean, and it's got constraints because you have the building here, then you have here, that road, and then you have the parking. There was one discussion before about getting rid of that road and having it just be the one, like a dead end around that way. I don't know if that works. It's probably too long, about 900-foot fire foes is your length of custody. You know, you have to, that's your maximum cul-de-sac length. So there's a lot of things to think about. But I mean, do we want to have a discussion with the planning board about it? I mean, about, or do we want?
I would be interested in having more input from just this, the five of us.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the town.
It's a community investment.
Definitely. Yeah, being, having served on the planning board, Peter, the ideas for what to do with that property have evolved as, with time. So I think it would be appropriate to get together with the planning department and the planning board and.
I will say that, you know, I can't, obviously, I can't speak for any future town administrators who might be working with you, but it is in the flood zone. And if I'm your town administrator, I will not be advocating for you to build municipal buildings there. I just won't do it for resiliency reasons.
Yeah, the only thing we've bantered about in the past was parking garage, you know, some kind of an elevated place to put cars. But that's a lot of expense just for.
And again, that should not be a municipal project.
Exactly.
That has to, that has to pencil out in the real world.
And the demand isn't as great as it was, once was. We have a greater demand for housing in other projects now, so it's.
But I think it's part of our reaching out to different boards and committees that may have, you know, input in this, like the planning board, Zone Board of Appeals. We should probably look at it, look in, you know, and doing that study again of the highest and best use.
Just know what the value is. Do you think it's worth doing? They're not that expensive, I don't know.
They are not that expensive. I don't think it will, I think, I mean, the numbers are really immaterial. The use, the use is probably still housing.
I mean, we can, I can, we can just circulate that 2009 report.
I'd like to see that.
Yeah, for.
I remember, I remember, I remember seeing it, but I don't remember.
Yeah, but can it tell you, I mean, the zonings, what it can be used for, what it can't be used for, you know, all that, that stuff. Yeah.
Let me, let me send, let me find it. And let me send everyone.
Don't spend too much time, because I've got it easily accessible and can send it to you.
Okay, let me.
Plus the background, the maybe planning board or, or planning department can give us a little more history with respects to the site itself.
And I'm interested, is it, is it in our MBTA zoning section?
Yeah, it is.
It must be.
Yeah.
I would imagine.
Yes.
That may be the edge of it, but it is in it.
Yeah. All right. So we'll look at the highest and best use and maybe talk to the planning board and see if they're interested in having a discussion with us about it. Okay. Oh, I'll just schedule a joint meeting with the finance committee, Bourne School Committee, Upper Cape Tech Committee.
Southside Fire Station.
Oh. Oh, southside, yep, wrong. I checked off the wrong thing. Southside Fire Station.
I'd like to just give you a very brief update because some things are happening. I have had a chance to talk with the current owner, and he is cooperative with allowing us more time to start doing some investigations. So I've reached out to LSP, a licensed site professional, to have the architect and civil engineer carry the, to subcontract with an LSP to do a phase one. And then, I mean, depending on what is returned with the phase one, we'll cross that bridge when we get there. But we, the owner, the current owner is at least willing to give us the time we need to do a phase one and see essentially what it comes back with. And then if we need to move on to a phase two, we can talk about that next.
At least they want to work with us, and that's good news in that respect, both see what it comes, come back as. But at least, at least, at least they're being open-minded, so that's good to know.
That is good.
So I think we should, my recommendation is I continue to work with the owner of 171 Clay Pond Road. I continue to work with a civil engineer and LSP to get more information.
Are we paying for this, or are they paying, or is the property owner paying for it?
We would pay for this.
It's our due diligence, right?
It's our due diligence. Yes, we would be paying for it.
Okay. Thank you. Now, I'll just schedule a joint meeting for the finance committee, Bourne School Committee, and Upper Cape Tech School Committee in advance of the FY 26 budget. This will be like our FY 24 review as well?
Yes.
That's what we did last time, isn't it? We did the FY 24.
Yes.
FY 24.
Review.
Review.
Like year-end review.
And the preview for FY 26.
Preview for FY 26. Wow.
I do think that the joint meeting was helpful. It was certainly helpful for Erica and I last year. So if, if you're willing to do it again, I would recommend November 19th.
Okay.
Be that date. And if you do want to, if you do want to do it and you want to make that motion tonight, I'll reach out tomorrow to the finance committee and superintendents to let them know on your behalf.
So we had a lot of people at that meeting. That's a lot of people. So do, where, can we?
We had at the police station.
We did it at the police station.
And it was tight there too, so I was thinking maybe Mass Maute Time and the Beach Bowl in their big conference room over there, because that holds over 50 people.
Yeah, but I don't know how, what their video capability is or whatever. I mean.
So you tape it?
In the ballroom? Are you saying in the ballroom? Yeah, they have.
Yeah.
Is it the same?
There was a retirement party there.
Yeah.
Jane Norton's retirement, they had a whole big.
We've had Mass.
No, but I don't mean video. I mean.
Oh, Zoom?
I mean, like, yeah.
Well, we taped the light, you just taped the light, and if you did it at the police station, it's going to be taped delay, so it's the same thing. You get brain born TV in and they tape it and rebroadcast it later. But I think, I think working with the academy for that bigger space, you can spread out more, it's more comfortable, you know.
Well, we also have the schools, the school library.
Yeah, but it echoes in there, it's hard to hear.
Which one, the middle school or the high school?
Either or. The high school, the high school, the high schools all set up. I mean, they have their school committee meetings in the.
Yeah, but that's not enough people.
Not enough space.
So there's a lot of people. So, so there's what, seven on the school committee? Nine on the finance committee?
Nine in the professional library and the actual library and media center.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's 16 plus that's five.
There's seven on the school committee, I mean, excuse me, there's seven on the finance committee.
Seven on school.
Well, okay, there's, there's two vacancies.
There's two vacancies.
There's two, yeah.
Nine actual.
Which may get filled. Five, and I don't know with Upper Cape, is that, I don't know how many people that is, plus the superintendents and stuff, so.
I mean, Upper Cape and, you know, and their membership, so that's.
Do you have a preference?
I would prefer, I would prefer using our equipment. And Erica and I understand it, we know we can, we can use it. I would prefer to work, go to the police station again.
Should you go to the police station? Yeah.
We're, we're comfortable with the space, we're comfortable with the equipment. It's a, it's a lot to have us.
Dependent on other people.
For, for a presentation like that. If it was just a meeting, fine, no problem. But if you don't want us to present anything.
All right, so.
That room was tight the last time I saw it, I was thinking.
I thought it was pretty good.
We could still add people in there.
They were sitting behind us, because the tables are going around.
Right, but we still, there's room up front too. You could add another table.
Well, we can give them a better count. There was more people on the finance committee then too. And I think some people were sitting behind because they didn't want to be at the table.
Yeah, there were, there were empty seats at the table.
The table.
There were. Some people just opted to sit.
Yes. Yeah.
It never worked, I just wanted to make sure people were comfortable because.
All right. So is there a motion to?
Motion to schedule a joint meeting with finance committee, Bourne School Committee, and Upper Cape Tech School Committee in advance of the fiscal year 26 budget on November 19th, 2024.
Second.
Motion by Anne Marie, second by Melissa. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ, yes. Five zero zero. We're good to go. And town administrators' report.
I just have three items tonight. One, I want to let everyone know that MassDOT will be hosting a live, in-person public information meeting about phase two of the Bourne Rail Trail on November 14th at 6:00 PM at the Pecassett Village Association Building. MassDOT will be providing an update on the project's alternatives analysis, as well as the project history, trail alignment evaluation, and potential impacts. The public is invited and encouraged to attend. The governor has recently signed an emergency order with changes to the firearms law. Master General Law 269, Section 10 now prohibits firearms, loaded or unloaded, from being possessed in any place owned, leased, or under the control of state, county, or municipal government for the purposes of government administration. The town can vote to further expand the restrictions, and the town may also vote to allow the possession in administrative buildings. If the select board wishes to exercise any of the local options to either make the emergency order more strict or to, or to not opt into the emergency order, we should schedule that as a future policy discussion.
When does this go into effect?
It is in effect.
And what is the definition of a government administration building?
So it's at our, it's essentially at, if we think we, if we think we conduct government administration in the building, then we have the, we have the ability to enforce this new executive order. So it's, it is highly undefined. So if this is, this is the report, so.
I'll read it tomorrow morning and whenever it gets on your page so I can actually, and then I'll start looking at it. Thank you for that.
Yes, do you want the citation again?
No, 269, Section 10.
Yes, okay. And finally, through the end of September, ISWM has diverted 9.83 tons of food waste from the landfill so far in 2024.
Nice. Awesome. Thank you. Minutes of September 10th, 2024.
Motion to approve as the.
Second.
Any discussion? Being none, roll call vote. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero. Yeah, she's had a long day. She's had a long two days.
Yes.
She's a long two days, so she's like, yeah. All right then. Any committee reports?
Tomorrow at 1:00, I will be meeting with the Affordable Housing Trust, and we will have our official statement on the, on the end of the street, and I'll, I'll report to you afterwards.
Okay, thank you. Correspondence.
Correspondence for October 15th, 2024. A, Talent Bank S. White for ZBA Associate Member opening. B, Talent Bank V. Gudas for Conservation Committee opening. And C, 134 Wings Neck Road, Pecassett, application for peer ramp and float.
Thank you. Pageant agenda, items related to correspondence or other items for discussion? Just the appointments. Next meeting dates, October 21, October 25, policy workshop, CWMP at 1:00 plus noon for.
Marijuana deliberation.
My question with that is, is if we're going to be submitting our scores tomorrow, once we submit our scores and they're public, what's there to deliberate? If you go and change the scores after, you know, on the 25th, after you submit them, are we opening ourselves up for litigation?
We're not changing the scores.
We're not changing the scores. We're going to accumulate them and then figure out what we're going to do. Are there ties? Are there pluses and minuses? How many are we gonna, it's put out? I think there's a lot to deliberate on once we get the two minutes scores. We're not changing.
Not changing scores.
Well, we could, but, but we could change it by decision. Okay. December 12th and 19th, December, November, November 12th and 19th, November 26, tentative Board of Sewer Commissioners, December 3rd, December 10th, December 17th. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Peter, motion by Peter, second by Anne Marie. Roll call vote. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yeah.
Jean? Yes.
Bad.
Yes, MJ, yes, five zero zero. Yeah, 9:06.